All right, welcome everybody to our first meeting in January of 2018, to the Village Board meeting. I hope you all safely and warmly survive the record cold setting that we had, and we're looking forward to warm weather coming soon. Maybe Friday. So first, let's stand for a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first on the agenda is our county legislator, Joel Tyner.
Happy New Year. I come very different. The first thing I wanted to say is, Mr. Mayor, there's a newly-elected county legislator in Beacon. His name is Nick Page. And one of the things he's bugging me about, he's like, "Joel, have you seen what's happening in Reinbeck? With that geothermal thing and the mayor?" So, you don't need any of my help to make that happen here, because you guys aren't on top of that. But what I just thought I'd put out there publicly is, if, and I know you already have a good working relationship with the county executive, I have a fairly decent relationship. If you might want to think about, if you haven't already, presenting that to the Dutchess County Association of Supervisors and Mayors, or, because I think it's a real good program that'd be worth emulating and replicating across the county, you know, making it easier for the homeowners and businesses to have geothermal. So, I just thought I'd put that out there, at the risk of seeming excessively unchillous. Also, like probably a lot of people in this room, I'm supporting the Chancellor of Livingston Elementary School and trying to get support, you know, from, I guess, Danimals and, you know, for that fitness playground. But the reason why I bring that up, I mean, that's a no-brainer, while we all support that, is because I sent that out to my email list, and somebody who's very prominent, I'm not going to say who it is, who's a very strong senior advocate in Reinbeck, said, "Joel, Joel, Joel, what you really need to be working on is affordable housing for seniors." I don't necessarily disagree with that. And the reason why I bring that up is because there's a couple different ways to do that. I could push for rent control. I could push for affordable housing, you know, a senior housing apartment complex somewhere. But I can't do it alone. I, you know, I'm in county government, trying to represent Reinbeck. So I bring that up. I know that the town of Reinbeck has had a kind of an affordable housing committee for many years, and I need to get up to speed on that. But I just bring it up because, you know, I send out these emails, and then I get feedback, and I don't want to ignore, because this woman is really pretty involved with senior issues in Reinbeck. So I just bring that forward. And you guys feel free to tell me tonight, or in the next month or two, what I should and could be doing to help make senior housing more affordable in Reinbeck. I wanted to invite everybody. I'm doing my first forum of the year. It's going to be Wednesday, January 31st, across the street, at 5:30 in Reinbeck Town Hall. It's about the new economy ideas, and I've talked about this before. What's new is, it's not just me anymore. There's about 140 people, a lot of small business owners in Reinbeck and all over the county, who signed on to endorse it. It's tinyurl.com/neweconomydutchess. And there's also five of us in the county legislature who represent 55,000 people, who signed the letter I circulated January 2nd. That's Chris Mann of Red Hook, Francina Emparo of Wappinger, Nick Page of Beacon, and Jim Carlo-Laverius of Poughkeepsie. And so, it's not just me anymore. And, you know, a few months ago, I shared with you guys that book about new economy ideas from Garal Parvitz of the Democracy Collaborative. So, if there's any chance that one of you, or if you could send an envoy, or an emissary, if you will, to that meeting. Because I really want to start getting things going on some of these new economy ideas. The, one of the reasons why it wasn't so hard for me to get at least some of my colleagues to sign on to that letter is because January 1st, the Poughkeepsie Journal had a huge article on page three about how the unemployment rate has gone up from October to November, and also from November 2016 compared to November 2017, unemployment is up. So, there, you know, everything is not horrible in Dutchess County, but there's a lot of innovative, new economy ways to turn things around that we're not doing. For instance, again, if you go to AlbanyCountyLandBank.org, there's a lot of zombie properties, not just in Poughkeepsie and Hyde Park and the town of Clinton. I'm sure they exist in Reinbeck as well. Properties that have been abandoned where, and again, if you go to AlbanyCountyLandBank.org, it's an organization that enjoys public support, that, you know, buys those properties and fixes them up and puts them back on the tax rules. It's not rocket science. It's happening, you know, an hour and a half north of us. There's no reason why it's not happening here. The Poughkeepsie Journal's called for it. Another county legislator, Rebecca Edwards, is picking up the torch on that. The Attorney General, Eric Schneiderman, has called for it. Another one, unfortunately, with the recent FCC decision on the net neutrality, is there's about 500 communities all across the country that have launched some form of municipal broadband network. Try to have a booming economy locally without broadband for everybody. We don't have it. It's too expensive, or it's just not happening. So municipal broadband is a real possibility. But I can't do it alone. Imagine if we had a locally-owned, a public regional bank, working with people like my kind, who's the Ulster County Executive, who has a history in banking. You know, Seattle, San Francisco, Philadelphia, Oakland, all these places are looking at a local public bank to help local banks lend money at lower interest. Homeowners, businesses, municipalities, students, you know, lower interest rates. It's simple common sense. Again, if you go to PublicBankingInstitute.org. We could be doing all sorts of cutting-edge stuff here. We're not. And last but not least, Oblong Books, Dick and Sedena Hermans, a few years ago, they came out with a report with Civic Economics and the American Booksellers Association. If we just divert about 10% of our spending each year in the Hudson Valley, that would divert literally about half a billion dollars into the local economy. Instead of spending it at the chain stores, spending it at the local stores. So there's a lot of things that we could and should be doing to, so the unemployment, so I don't have to read the Poughkeepsie Journal articles about the unemployment rate going up. One of the other things I handed out was the, doing my 2030 annual Martin Luther King March. And one of the things that Martin Luther King worked on the last year or two he was alive was a Poor People's Campaign. And I'm trying to collect stories from people who are working two or three jobs, and they can barely make ends meet. They can barely pay the bills. People in Reinbeck, people in Clinton, people all over Dutchess County working two or three jobs, and they can't pay the bills. So I'm looking, if you don't want to share your name with us, with me, that's fine, even if it's anonymous. Because I'm trying to get a minimum wage in Dutchess County, around here, of 15 bucks an hour, for the companies that have 500 more workers. It's only supposed to go up to 1215 an hour by 2021 in Dutchess County. In Seattle, the unemployment, the unemployment rate is 20% lower than ours, and everybody's working for a large company. 500 employers or more is making 15 bucks an hour. The last thing I'll say is, is that the laundromat in Reinbeck, doing my laundry, and somebody had gotten to the bulletin board before I did, with a flyer for an organization that I've been working with for several years, citizensforlocapower.org. And time's a-wasted, because next Thursday, Citizens for Local Power is going to be going up to Albany and trying to stop the central Hudson rate hike. So please go to that website and sign on it. Citizensforlocalpower.org. Central Hudson made $50 million in profits last year. Okay, actually, in 2016, 15 million in profits. They want a 12% rate hike. Their fixed charge, their monthly fixed charge, is $24 a month. They want to raise it. Do you know what the fixed monthly charge is in New Jersey? It's $3 a month. In Massachusetts, it's $6 a month. In Rhode Island, it's $5 a month. But why, why, you know, they don't need to raise it anymore. Last but not least, $6 billion state budget deficit. For decades now, I've been talking about alternatives to cutting services, raising property taxes, massive state budget cuts. Please recognize that single payer would save $45 billion a year. Fossil fuel-free would save $36 billion a year, fully implemented, according to the Cornell-Stanford Report. And the New York City Comptroller's Office came out with a report a couple years ago. Legalized marijuana, that would bring in $400 million a year in revenue, just in New York City alone. There are alternatives, because the governor, David Stated, the State Address, last Wednesday, he didn't say anything about how he's going to balance the budget. That's $6 billion worth of, so how are we going to balance it? And there are alternatives. Anyway, get involved before it's too late. Check out the Fiscal Policy Institute, fiscalpolicy.org. I'm at 876-2488. I apologize for talking a little bit too much tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Okay, so next on the agenda, a change we made last month, and we're continuing, is to move the public comment section up to the front of the meeting. So at this time, if there is anybody that would like to make a public comment, and we will have you come up, state your name, and stand at the microphone, and hear it out. That way, if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, which I hope you all do, you're not required, so. So Mr. Wall? Please come up and address the board.
Mr. Mayor, Board, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Mayor.
I'm here because I got an email with a promotional brochure masquerading as a village announcement about geothermal coming to the village and how the right-of-way was going to be granted. I mean, I had a long conversation with Gary Onco today, and he assured me that this wasn't an endorsement by the village, but this announcement just is an endorsement. And in fact, the mayor is assuring people that they will save money. So I just want to address that. This is something I have a little bit of background in. I'm an energy engineer. And I happen to know that, well, not only are these systems very expensive, they always do what they say they're going to do, and what they're claiming is probably not going to happen. And they don't offset carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, because you still have to generate electricity to provide the electricity for the heat pumps. They're only doing air-source heat pumps. I mean, they're doing ground water, ground-source heat pumps, but they're distributing the air in the house with air source, according to their own brochure. And that raises the, well, actually, lowers the efficiency of these units. So a lot of these things is, I consider snake-off. And I just wanted to voice that, those concerns, because I think for the village to put their informateur on this makes it seem like you're telling people that this is a good way to save energy. And frankly, if people would invest in, for instance, weatherizing their homes, adding insulation, adding better windows, they would do so much more and spend so much less money. And if we really want to make our economy robust, if we really want to save energy, if we really want to be green, investing in this kind of technology is, I think, a dubious way to go. I'm not saying that they don't, you know, they have been shown to cost less over the period of a year than perhaps burning propane, but the costs involved are huge on these things. And if something goes wrong, those costs can escalate. I know many friends around here that have got these systems that have had nothing but troubles with them. So I think, you know, to put the village's direct informateur on this, I think is, might be a mistake. Also, the question has risen, if you're granting somebody access to the right-of-way, I mean, it's a right-of-way, so you're basically, the village has the use of the land. They don't own it. So could you give somebody that right-of-way when it's just a right-of-way? So anyway, that's a question that you ask. And it's a last second. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Having none, we will move on to our department reports. Treasury report, Karen McLaughlin.
Okay, the treasurer's report is for the period ending December 31st, 2017. The tax collector's account ended the month The general fund ended the month with $147,852.20. The water fund ended the month with $746,799.34. And the sewer fund ended the month with $833,932.58. Vouchers presented for payment, including prepaid's, in the general fund, total $42,138.71. In the water fund, $19,145.07. And in the sewer fund, $19,976.98. An operating statement is provided for revenues and expenditures through January 9th of 2018. The water and sewer adjustments have been reviewed by the water liaison and the sewer liaison, and those are presented for authorization. Do you want to do them one at a time?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd like to recommend that we amend the sewer corrections as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Carried.
I make a motion to make the water adjustments as submitted.
A second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Carried.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the budget amendments. The budget amendments that I'm presenting is, predominantly is a rebate that we received from Veridian. In the general fund, we received a rebate of $3,006.11. And we receive those in the streetlights, the police utility, the parking lot, the village garage, the fire utility, this gazebo mini-park. And those were spread out as they were received. Also, in the sewer fund, we received that rebate of $10,999. So that was nice to see that come in. We also brought that in so we didn't distort the way that the expenditures look. We brought that in, and we're just going to adjust the budget to reflect that in each one of those accounts. The, I'm asking from the contingency, $1,295 to be transferred to the safety inspectors line item, the zoning and the planning. And that is for the municipality software that we did not anticipate purchasing at the beginning of this year. So those are my budget amendments.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the amendments as stated.
Second.
Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries?
Okay, and my next item is, we have been, the village has been very diligent with their expenditures in the last few years, and really watching the budget, working with the department heads. And I wanted to address our investments of our cash. And there, a company, it's not a company, it's a New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Security Group that's an investment pool for municipalities and school districts. And we have an opportunity now with the interest rates going up to maybe put some of our funds into this and receive, like, for the last, like, eight days, it was like 1.19, and we're like at 0.03 in our savings. So I wanted to recommend that the board authorize us to use New York Class, New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Security Systems. And we'll work on investing some of our, some of our cash and making a better return on it. There's no timeframe. You don't have to leave it in for any timeframe. You can, they're AAA-rated, and we can reach out to other municipalities. I think the BOCs uses them, and many of the school districts, and many other municipalities use them.
Is there any kind of insurance guarantee? We, it's like, I know that by ordinance, we have to do real conservative vehicles.
Right. And this complies with those.
It complies with that part, I mean.
With that part of it.
I spoke to Karen about this before the meeting, and a lot of municipalities, I don't know if you just said this, but a lot of municipalities are involved with this.
Right.
And it's invested in mostly bonds. It's not invested in stocks, which are more of this here. But I don't, the question is, is it like guaranteed by the government? Or like FDIC or something like that? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I don't think it is.
What's a full faith and credit language? Something like that.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to table this, I can get that answered.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to throw a wrench on this.
That's all right.
Karen and I met with them, and we also went over the documentation. And, you know, we're sure, again, I don't know the numbers in terms of protection, but a lot of the school districts have been using it, municipalities have been using it as an informal investment. And it doesn't mean we're going to take all of it and move over there. We're still going to keep our existing bank and existing amendments, existing investment at the banks, but use this as a way to see how we can further enhance our revenue with a better return. But I understand your question, if there's, you know, in terms of guarantees, right?
I mean, I can check. I'm sure there is, but I don't have it available right here, so.
Is it okay with the board if we were to move forward this, pending Karen sending us an email in terms of making sure that there is some guarantees?
How much money are we talking about shifting over? How much money are we talking?
We're looking at maybe doing $300,000 from the general, 100 from the water, and 100 from the sewer. So we're looking at 500. Right now, we have $1,325 in the tax collector's account, so that's quite conservative.
And are there any limits? I know sometimes these accounts have transaction limits or anything like that monthly, or?
There are no limits. We just are going by our past trends of when we need our money here.
Karen remains available to us if it's accessible.
Immediate, right, the next day, right. There's no timeframe that you have to leave it in.
Brad, are you okay? If we?
Yeah, I'm just trying to find out where the, go ahead.
If it meets the, it meets the standards, the legal standards for municipalities to put in the account.
You want to hand that to Brad?
So I'd like to make a motion that we invest the $500,000 from the surrogate funds into New York Class pending confirmation that we do have the securities in place.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carried. Good. Thank you, Karen.
Okay. Thank you. The next item, the next item is the, some of the departments, or the, one of the departments had approached me about the village having a credit card. And so I went to M&amp;T Bank, which is our bank, and talked to them about getting a credit card with a government, with getting a government credit card. Now, the credit card policy, it would be important to have the credit card policy in place prior to issuing or having the credit cards. So the advantage of having a credit card is if, like, they, if, let's say, the police department wants to buy a trailer or wants to buy something, and they get, they have to get the procurement, they have to get all three prices. But if they can get the best price online, then it's an avenue that they can order it online, and they need a credit card to pay for it. So the procurement policy would be the same. They would still need to, anything over 500 would still need to get three written quotes, or anything larger than that would still need to go out to bid. It just gives them the flexibility to be able to shop online and to be able to look for prices, whether it's eBay or Amazon or some other company.
Couple questions. Is a credit card issued to the department, to a person in the department?
It's issued to the person in the department. They are responsible. That person, the three that I'm, the three that we had talked about starting out with was the police department. One would be issued to Pat as the clerk, and then one is issued to the mayor as the chief executive officer. So the person is responsible if that, if something was unauthorized, something was purchased that was unauthorized, that person would be responsible for that purchase.
Has anybody had a chance to read the credit card policy that we, that was drafted out?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to also, when I spoke with Tom Murphy, this is through like a third party, and in like May of this year, M&amp;T Bank is going to be bringing their credit card stuff in-house for the government department. So we, instead of doing all the departments, we wanted to start with this, see how it works, and then expand on the policy or expand from here.
So we'll go into discussion. But first, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the use of credit cards, given the three, one for village mayor, one for village clerk, and one for the police department, as identified, and using the existing procurement policy.
Second.
And now, discussion.
We're having trouble.
We're having trouble with that.
Well, I just think it opens up a can of worms if we're starting to give out credit cards to departments. I don't see the advantage of it. You're saying that they want to buy things online?
Yeah.
That is, that is one advantage, yes. You know, in terms of making purchases. But you could also make a purchase locally, using that card as well. It doesn't have to be online. And so the same policy would be in place for that local purchase once you had the approvals for it.
And I think a lot of times, people require payment, and they don't want to wait the month to go, this is the person selling the item, doesn't want to wait the month to go through the process of waiting for the board meeting to get paid.
The department heads already can buy things, you know, create POs and buy things.
Yeah, we've never had a problem with anybody purchasing anything.
Well, I didn't mean it that way. But I mean that they have that authority now, you know, so.
Right.
There have been times, can I interrupt? There have been times when I've gone to order things, and it's difficult if you don't have a credit card, because there are some companies that hesitate, or they, they're not used to, or they don't know the procurement, or, you know, waiting for a voucher system. Or we can get a better price by going on Amazon or something like that, that's a lot less than obtaining it somewhere else.
Then we're not helping local businesses.
I'm not even talking, I'm not even talking about local businesses.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're going to be buying things online from other companies like Amazon, isn't it better to promote local businesses?
There are some things that you can't get locally.
Yeah, but we've never had a problem buying anything. I just don't like the idea. I know we're starting with three credit cards, and then next year, this time, we're going to have six credit cards out there with every department. And we've had problems before in the past. It's, it's a lot harder if somebody uses a credit card to kind of track what they've been buying.
How is that so?
How are we going to?
Well, it has to come through the, it has to come through the audit of claims through a voucher for the board to review.
So this process?
After it's been purchased, right?
But the process is still the same. You know, the department heads are allowed to make a purchase. They have to file a voucher for that. The same way with this, they would have to file a voucher, they would have to file a voucher to substantiate it. If they don't, they're responsible for the purchase. How do we do?
How do we do purchases today in the clerk's office?
It's either done by voucher, or if there's something that we have to get, like that Christmas party, to be, I had, I put it out on my own card, and then I had to wait to be reimbursed.
So in fact, we are using credit cards?
But you're using...
We're using personal credit cards to do it.
Right, and to me, I absolutely respect what Howie is saying, but it's more bothersome, more troublesome to me that you might be, that we're mixing personal credit cards with the business affairs of the municipality.
And that's what you have to...
I think it's actually cleaner to have the credit cards.
Right.
And I presume that the account is the village, and the cardholders, the mayor, the sergeant, the village clerk. So if it's a business account, it's available online, and I would presume at a minimum the trustees, if they so desired, could log in and see who's spending what. So in fact, it could provide an even greater level of accountability.
Well, like Karen said, you'd still have to show receipts, you'd still have to go through the whole system, like, just like we do now.
I wouldn't want to look at your personal or anyone's personal credit card to see justification of an expense, John, that we, that I did because it was a village-related expense.
Right.
So I like it. If anything, I would actually like to see the amounts a little bit higher. Not, not higher than what's established for the mayor's office, but it just seems to me that, certainly the police sergeant.
Well, Pat orders an awful lot of stuff.
Yeah, but most of the things I personally order are through companies that we can get billed from. But the first thing that came to my mind was the Christmas party when I had purchased things at Stop &amp; Shop and things that they don't bill, and you had to be paid, so...
Well, there's been numerous examples over the course of the year where...
Pete has had more issues than I have trying to obtain...
We're shelling out personal money and then waiting 30 days to get paid on personal expenses. And we're not personal expenses, getting our personal funds re-stated.
And we had an employee that went up to Morrisville to go to a course and paid, and had to pay for the course and pay for the lodging, and it was like, he had to wait to be reimbursed and...
Yeah. So if an employee does that, whose card are they going to use? The mayor's card? Now you're saying employees are going to be able to charge, right?
Well, she, this was an example.
No, I mean...
You're right, it doesn't solve that particular case, but it's a good illustration. Pat had to travel as sergeant for the mayor.
But if an employee wanted to go, I could authorize that travel.
Sure.
Approved by the board, I could call and make the payment under my name for that employee, and then that employee isn't out to personal funds for 30 days. And we literally had to jump through hoops sometimes because we had employees who needed that money back, and we would call a special meeting just to approve the check to get it signed.
We shouldn't have to burden the employees with an extra...
I'm just deaf, don't worry about it.
With an extra administrative task.
Well, I stand by my first comment, it opens up a can of worms, so I'm staying, you know, we want to vote on it?
I guess my question is, so we would assume that, just like the current voucher system, we would see a receipt stapled to the voucher, and then I guess it's up to you to make sure that whatever's been charged, we have the same number of receipts for whatever the amount charged is.
Right, well, it would be up to the department head to make sure that they went through the proper channels. I mean, if it came through Pat, you know, Pat would say, "Do you have all these and all the receipts?"
Okay, I see, my question is just, if somebody says charges $10,000 worth of stuff, but there's only $7,500 worth of receipts.
Then they're responsible.
Then they're responsible, and that gets checked, would be checked every month to balance out?
Yes, true.
Oh, it has to, it has to, yeah.
And as you guys sign off on the vouchers, you would see that as well.
So we can, we'll be able to look at the credit card?
Yes, absolutely. For your department and, well, all of them, because we sign all of them.
Well, the statement and the receipts will all be attached to the voucher.
Yep. Nothing changes, except for how the payment was made. That's the only thing that changes in the whole process.
Agreed. It's, I think it's crazy that our village clerk has to use her credit card and then wait to be reimbursed, when there's a simple solution. We should have a village credit card for the village clerk.
I think it's a no-brainer for the clerk.
Well, do you want to amend the, amend the motion? The motion is, right now, four to three credit cards, one for village mayor, one for village clerk, and one for the police sergeant.
Does Pete buy a lot of things? I mean, Pete?
Yes. They do. And most of their stuff is, most of their stuff is unique that is requiring them to go outside to get.
I guess, Howie, I guess your concern is, once people have credit cards, they tend to spend more money. That, that's a concern.
Well, they still have their line item.
You gave me an example of some town or village that had a problem already with it. I forget what, maybe we don't want to say who it is, but...
Well, they addressed it with the, they didn't have a credit card policy, so I think that's why it was, the policy needs to come before the credit card. So we need to iron out the policy and be clear on the policy before issuing any credit cards, so I think they didn't do that.
Do you want to make a recommendation to change of the policy?
No, I just don't see a need for credit cards.
There is a risk that someone could go in one month and go on a binge, and then there's, you know, then the horse is out of the barn, but...
That is true.
But they're in these three people's names.
But they'd have to go to that person to get the credit card to even authorize it. So an employee, you know, is not carrying the credit card with them. They would have to come to see Pat and say, "Pat, can I have the credit card?" And I'm sure Pat's gonna, you know...
It's locked up.
Yeah, right.
You mean, the mayor wouldn't be able to carry the credit card?
I don't plan on carrying it, no.
The sergeant?
Right. There's no...
I think they should be able to.
Well, but I don't plan, I don't, I think that's, I just, that's my own personal belief. If I need it, I know where I could go get it. And I think anybody should have that, rather than where they are.
I see the, I see the convenience factor, you know, I have a good sense for where the controls are for something like this. We're about to do our budget. Try it for a year, I guess, and see, you know, see how, see how well it works. I think with proper controls, I mean, I guess one question is, if somebody does make an unauthorized purchase, how do we reclaim that?
It says, it is understood that any unauthorized expenditures to the issued credit cards will be the responsibility of the designated cardholder, and will be reimbursed to the village by the designated cardholder within seven days of receipt with noted details of the charges.
The same thing could happen today.
But if they don't have it, we're guaranteeing this payment, and if they don't have it, then...
Right.
Well, but can't the same thing happen today?
If they steal something, you mean?
No, I mean, if they go make, a department head goes and makes a purchase.
Right.
Right. Because they're, they're authorized to make purchases.
They could go to a place where we have an account and get something for themselves.
Yes, that could happen today.
Yeah.
Yes.
The same thing could happen locally.
The only thing I'd be responsible for.
All we're trying to do is make it a little bit more convenient for instances where it's not convenient, I guess.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I think that with the proper controls, I think it's okay.
I think you brought up a good point. I think, I would like to amend the motion to say that, that this be a trial period for the purpose of a year, and then at the year, we need to readdress, readdress the policy and make a decision on how well it worked and as a review.
And which is these three people?
What?
Which is these three people?
Which is these three accounts, yes.
You, the...
Clerk and the...
Peter and...
Clerk.
And then, I guess I have one question, if, this makes it a little complicated, let's say, for instance, in this travel, in the travel session, how do we make sure that that gets reallocated back to the right line? If it was coming out of the...
That's a treasurer's job.
Yeah, we...
That's what they do.
That's what we do the whole week before the meeting with everything.
It's your eyesight.
And if you, and, I mean, it just applies for you guys as well. If you want to go to NICO, and you're staying over, and you don't want to put it on your personal charge card, there's a way to pay that fee now, so you're not carrying that expense for as well as trustees, because we're, as trustees, you're all entitled to, I think, what is our limit, $2,000, something like that a year?
500 a person.
Yeah, so we could, you know, it's available for, it's not just for employees, it's available for anybody who wants to further their knowledge in government by attending seminars or whatever that are not held locally.
That's the bottom part of the travel policy.
Right.
Personally, I don't feel it's necessary to do a pilot and revisit this. I mean, the corrective action that we had to take for some particular reason and the cost of the...
Yeah, if you needed to cancel them, you could always cancel them.
It's like running a business. If you're running a business, would you have a credit card in your business?
Of course, of course, of course.
It's not capital one, unfortunately.
We are running a business.
That's all right. I think I moved to close the discussion.
All right, so the motions are carried. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
So Carrie.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Rick, okay, thank you.
Okay, my last item is the budget for 2018-19. We're coming into the budget year, and we, I sat down with the mayor, and we kind of talked about putting a proposed schedule together, so we're not every week looking ahead and looking at dates. So the proposed initial schedule for the budget would be a public input meeting on January 23rd, a public, a budget meeting kickoff, January 30th, and then the budget review with department heads would be each of the departments coming in, so that would be February 6th, February 20th, and February 26th, with the, with, to present the tentative budget to the board on March 13th. And then, moving forward, since by law we have to have our budget, our public hearing on the budget by the 15th, we have a regular meeting April 10th, so we're looking to have the public hearing for the budget on April 10th. All of these meetings will be starting at 7:00 PM and will be held at the village hall.
And obviously, all of them are open to the public.
They're all open to the public, and if, if the board decides, if you decide you need to change them, you can change them, but we thought we'd try and get a plan, just a plan going and get a few of them scheduled out.
Can I do one legal notice for all those meetings?
Sure, absolutely.
It may not matter, but I do think, for example, on the 30th, there's a conflict with the village, with the planning board, Tuesday night meeting, so I don't know if that was something that we considered.
Well, we can move things around, we could also use the room downstairs if we have to.
Right, of course, yeah, right.
For workshops as well, depending on where we are, but there is room to accommodate people there to hold that meeting.
Right, of course.
I would just like to comment on the first meeting, which is January 23rd, which is the public input meeting. This is really not to review the budget, it's because we're not coming in with a proposed budget on January 23rd, because this is a review for the, this is a chance for the public to come forward and say, "I would like to see X," whatever X is, right? "I would like to see more money put, set aside for highways," right, for paving, for paving of roads, or whatever their concern or whatever their issue is, I'm picking on highway, but it could be for any, you know, "Why aren't we fixing our water pipes, et cetera? I'd like to have more money," or anything. So input from the public that says, you know, so we can see where their focus is in terms of us being able to then address their concerns in the budget when we go, when we go through the process. So that will be a public input meeting, you know, just to receive, mostly to receive comment, rather than a, rather than a budget review. Okay? Anybody have any questions about the dates or the schedule?
So these are all going to be public meetings at 7 o'clock?
Yeah, we said they're all public meetings at 7:05. Let me notice this now. Okay. I don't think we need to vote on those, they're just regular sessions.
Aye.
Would you like to add more, Howie? Do you want more meetings?
No, this is good, well, we always can add more if we need to. There's a big gap between, it's February 6th and February 20th, so...
Yeah, because that's...
Well, you have a regular meeting between there.
That's why.
I have a meeting we can put in there later, I'll mention it later.
Okay.
So that's all I have. Unless you have any questions.
All right, next is the police and court. See if you can read these from here. So for the police report, for the month of December, total number of incidents in the town is 23. Total number of incidents in the village is 102. Total number of tickets for the town is 10. Total number of tickets for the village is 123. Total arrests is two. Total number of accidents is 12. Some special events that happened during the month of December, obviously with Sinterklaas, you know, Sinterklaas being a very congested time, there were 17 vehicles ticketed for parking violations, and three vehicles towed for parking violations during that event. And then we have the snow ordinance, which is in fact, so there's no parking on village streets during the winter time, and we've been trying to really work hard because it really makes the cleanup for the roads and everything better. There's been 41 tickets issued so far in the month of December for parking during the Next is the court, November court summary. This is a new report that we, I've asked for, which is really part of, we're going to keep, continue to enhance on this, but their report is delayed a month because they got to get the data from wherever they get their data, in terms of when they send it up and back to us. So this is, it'll always be a month lag, this will be for the month of November. Tickets that were completed both from court sessions and mailed in for the month is 122, and revenue from the state for those tickets was $4,690. Any questions on police or court?
I'm sorry, is revenue sent to the state or revenue...
This was revenue from the state.
From the state.
Revenue from the state was what, in November, $4,690. Okay? Fire department. Chief, would you like to comment on anything in the fire department? We don't have a report this month.
It didn't come through?
I do not have it, no, sir.
Not by four o'clock.
All right, I think it was set, so nothing, status quo.
Okay.
I'll make sure I forward the numbers.
That's fine, very good.
Pat, we couldn't hear what Kyle said because he wasn't at a microphone, so...
So I'll repeat, the chief is status quo for the month, and he will forward the numbers so we can include it in the, in the minutes for later. Building, planning, and zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll read these few numbers into the record. Planning and zoning building, December, monthly fees, CO searches, $1,500, building permits, $750, fire inspections, $600. No activity for either the planning board or for the zoning board, and so those are the total report numbers for the month. We actually have got two items to quickly discuss. Each of them are uploaded into, of course, our cloud server by Pat. One relates to our zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Fenton, John Fenton, and some of the requirements that he has identified, and I know that we'll be discussing to fulfill, obviously, the spot that's been vacated or created as a result of Karen McPartland's departure, but I believe that, you know, we'll talk about this in more detail when we go into executive session later on. But the other item that I just wanted to briefly mention was... But the other item that I just wanted to briefly mention was a, an item that's been raised by the chair of the planning board, David Miller. David has discussed it with me, of course, as the liaison, but has also exchanged some emails with myself and with the mayor, and the planning board is interested in working with a committee that yet to be established that would potentially expand the historic district of the, of the village. The reason to do this is because it would provide a great opportunity to preserve and insulate the village from potential contractors or renters that come in with lacking maybe the appreciation that we, we would desire in terms of respect to the history of the village. But there is a, apparently, a, a need that the village board would have to vote in some capacity to approve or establish the greater scope of the historical village. I, so certainly, we would have to involve the board, and that's why I'm, I'm bringing it up in conversation tonight. There's nothing that we are looking to vote on tonight. In fact, I think that the next step would be to speak with outside council on how to proceed with the village board executing, exercising the ability to expand the, the village historic district. If we do, in fact, find the mechanism on how to legally do that, and we do discuss it, and we do expand it, then the next step would be to have a subcommittee established, advisory committee established, to work with a group of volunteers and try and establish the new parameters of the, what would be the, the new borders of the historical, what makes up the streets, houses, that would be part of the historical village. So, again, there's nothing really that I wanted or expected of the board this evening other than just the opportunity to share this, this thought. It certainly has the support of the planning board, and, you know, I think that it warrants additional consideration, and at this stage, other than reaching out to outside council for a little bit more guidance on this, I don't have anything further to share at this, at this moment.
Is there a financial impact to do this? I mean, there's, there's meetings and discussions and, and everything else that's going on, but identification of homes, is there an assessment of value that has to be done, do surveys have to be completed? I'm not sure what, I think I would like to know also more what the process is.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
We talked about this when we were revising the code, and, and the village board, we don't really have the expertise, and neither did the commission that we put together. It's almost like the historical folks have to come up and make some findings, and so the findings aren't arbitrary or capricious, so we can come up with a new inventory list, you know, so that would be your subgroup, I would assume.
Right, and I'm, I'm following Chair Person Miller's lead on this, what he has shared, and, and I certainly have no question of that. It requires a lot of research, a lot of analysis, and it ultimately is documentation that is filed with Albany, and I don't know the answer, Mr. Mayor, to the, the cost. I, I don't, I haven't seen anything thus far that would suggest it would be problematic other than it would be very time consuming. This isn't anything that would happen, happen quickly, but...
There's a public hearing process due for this, I would assume.
I would think so, right.
Well, right, that's one of the things that I'd have to discuss with the outside council, what, what would be the process, because I, I have to say, really, I don't have any idea. And then, by the way, that was David's recommendation too, was to go to outside council for some guidance on this, but I, yes, I would imagine that it would have to be.
Is there something that's driving this specifically, or is this just a generalized thought?
The, the drive of it is to better insulate or insulate more than we currently are doing in terms of protecting the, the architecture of the, of the village. In some of the exchanges of communications that, that I've had with the, the planning board, you know, they can point to specific examples of homes that probably would have met the threshold of being historic, but no one invested the time or effort to characterize in that way, and for that reason, builders can come in and actually tear down the property, that's something that fairly recently has happened, and, and construct whatever design they want. Planning board would be greater empowered to hold a standard that is consistent with the preservation and historical significance of the village if this was to move forward, if in fact, you know, we... So it's a series of steps, it's not anything that would happen soon. Step one is again, you know, I'd have to initiate some conversation with council, more dialogue, obviously, with, you know, the chair and the other members of the planning board, but it seems to be a pretty important issue and concern to the planning board and...
I agree. I think preserving our historic culture in the village center and as that's expanding out, I think is an important aspect of our village that makes us unique to be able to do this, so...
So, just so you know, we have the historic district overlay already, so what we would be doing, what he's suggesting, if I'm understanding correctly, is that we're expanding and not changing code, you know, we're just expanding the district.
Sometimes, I know that sometimes people find the historic district overlay, the, the requirements sometimes kind of onerous, and have we gotten over the years much pushback on the district? People saying, "Geez, I really wanted to put in this window, but I can't, I wanted to put on this extension, but I can't," or has it been pretty well accepted? And, I mean, I just know the history, I haven't even looked at that.
No, there's been no pushback. I mean, somebody, when somebody wants to make an addition, there's recommendations what, from the planning board what they could do, and usually, everybody's happy, you know, there's...
Certainly in the six months, Rick, trustee Lou, that, that I've had the, the ability or the, the, the opportunity to sit in on the planning board meetings, I, I haven't accounted that as an observer as an issue, and that's not, and, and the planning board is never there to be an obstructionist, but as I mentioned, they, they do work with the homeowners. It hasn't been an issue. By the way, I, I did it only to, I did upload the overlay maps that Brent was discussing, so they, they actually are in the files that are up in the cloud.
So I think this is something that we should consider, involves, rather than debating, I think, but it's something that we need to have on the list for the planning board to continue to pursue and provide us an update as something that we should consider.
Right.
So, I would encourage the planning board to do more and...
I presume it's all right with the, the board if I speak to council and get some conversation going on this on our behalf, but what actions do we require to take, so...
I think so.
Good, okay. That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. I need to backtrack, and I apologize, because I jumped through the fire stuff too quickly and did not look at the agenda, because we actually have received bids for our fire engine that was retired this year. So, at this time, I'd like to open up the bids for the fire truck that we received. I have two sealed envelopes, right? That's it?
And then one email.
And one, but it's letters, dated, email?
It's from the same person, I don't know if it's the same amount.
Ah, okay, well, I'll read it all, and we'll see where we're at. So this is the fire truck that was out for bid. The first bid is from Wingdale Materials LLC, post office box 1130 in Mount Pleasant, in Pleasant Ridge Road, Wingdale, New York. "To whom it may concern, I, Charles Geiler, would like to place a bid in the amount of Second bid is from JSSJR Enterprises for used car, trucks, and equipment to the village of Rhinebeck, New York. "We will offer $4,290 for the 1989 E1 fire engine as advertised." Thank you, Joseph, I'm sorry, I can't read Joseph's last name, nor can I pronounce Joseph's last name, I'm sorry. And then, an email. I'll go through all of them.
Should be in there, same amount as the Wingdale, I think it was from the same person.
Now, this was for the bid document, Chuck Geiler for the $7,000, that's the email, right? That's the same one.
Mm-hmm.
And this receipt sort of, as advertised in the Pecosy Journal. So we did have a reserve, if I remember right, on the fire truck, of $5,000, so that reserve of $5,000, the one bid from JSSJR is below what we had said was our reserve bid for that, so that leaves us to the other bid for Charles Geiler, who would like to place a bid in the amount of $7,000 on the E1 Cyclone fire engine.
You can use the gavel.
We can, but, sure, please, poor Danielle, I'll offer chair if I did that.
No, I have to stop.
Yes, so, we can, I first, I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid from Charles Geiler for $7,000 on the, on the fire truck.
Second.
Any discussion?
Good. He gets the keys to it.
Chief, would you, any comments, and your thoughts in terms of the...
I'll have Passson certify their documentation to the, the bid was awarded to them, and then you can contact the village for the arrangements of the title and everything, and then I'll get with them and you guys can review the equipment for the day purchase.
So I can put your contact information for reviewing? Okay, perfect, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Abstained? So carry, so... Thank you, Chief, and fire department for your support in helping us get through this. Okay, next, we'll, we'll jump back now, we jumped back, so the highway department is next.
Okay, I'd like to start with something fun and enjoyable. This is a, a certificate of appreciation to the highway foreman, Michael Wolf, who as of January 4th of 2018, completed 25 years of service here within the village, so we thank him. Mike unfortunately had a doctor's appointment this evening, so he couldn't make it. Gary and I have signed the certificate, Mike's been a really integral part of the village for a long time, and we just wanted to let people know and to thank him for his, his years of work and service.
Round of applause for it.
Other than that, the report, the department has been up to its normal duties of storm removal, brush leaf tree removal, it's been replacing some signs around the village, park cleanup. A special notice is that Christmas tree pickup will terminate on January 12th, so if you have Christmas trees and you want it to be picked up, please do so. I believe that they get mulched, which we then actually use and use for sold, so. The other thing is, I know we discussed the security system, hopefully by the end of the month, the security system will be installed down at the highway department. That's it.
I'd, I'd like to make just a comment about the signs that were placed, because we have received comments from village residents on South Parsonage Street. As we all know, Parson, South Parsonage is an active area for students to be walking to and from school a lot of times. It is a 25 mile an hour zone in that area. We have replaced the speed zone signs in there to make them more reflective, they were old signs and were showing wear and tear, and were not as reflective as they could be, especially during the winter months when our students are walking on there and it is dark out and for people to be able to see the signs, and we've added additional school zone signs in that area to remind people that it is a school zone, and we've increased patrols in that area for that, for that traffic, because we really want to protect our students as they're going to and from school, and it seems they are walking a lot and it is dark, and so, but even when it's daylight, it seems one of the issues was when we striped that road, it seems to have increased the speed, but striping the road was a requirement to do, but for some people, somebody who believe now that the road is striped, they can go faster on it, versus before, when, for years it wasn't striped. I don't know why that is, but it has been noticed that speed has increased, so we're trying to take necessary efforts to reduce the speed on South Parsonage Street by doing that.
Thanks.
Water?
For December, total water treated was 13,200,000 gallons. They cleaned the flock tanks, there was a new plow on the Dodge truck, Costco was on the site for the boiler service, HO Penn on the site for the generator service, Jennelli the security company was there to service the alarm system. We are switching over to the new alarm system, I believe, if we're next, right?
Yes.
For the install?
Yep.
So probably the middle of this month, they're doing highway at the end of the month. We have had a number of water service line and some water mains have been breaking because of the bitter cold weather. Rhine Cliff is back online, we were replacing a service line or fixing a service line, and the valve was turned off and then it leaked, so we had to go back to the main and turn off the entire hamlet until we could repair the valve, which they had to hammer through the ice to get down to the valve because the frost line is all the way down at the water main. So there's, we have a new valve there to turn off, what is it, Hutten or...
It was on Hutten, Orchard and Hutten.
Hutten, yeah. So we're just, we're getting through these things, you know, it, it's just a, a climate condit, condition with our archaic plumbing, which we're in, you know, trying to get grant requests for and things like that, so bear with us, but things, we did make it through the cold snap.
Yeah. Thank you to the Billy, to the hamlet of Rhine Cliff for, for being patient, for being out for five, six hours today. So, good news, we got a, and I'm going to read this letter from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, just a couple paragraphs. "Dear Mayor Bassett, I stole Gary's mail. In 2011, Governor Cuomo launched the Regional Economic Development Councils and consolidated funding application, CFA, to provide each New York region with the tools to create and implement a roadmap for economic prosperity and job creation. This community-based model uses local assets to drive economic growth and has resulted in unprecedented collaboration and partnerships. We're pleased to inform you, the village of Rhinebeck, that the floodproofing for Rhine, the Rhinebeck Low Lift Station projects has been selected to receive up to $32,500 through the Climate Smart Communities CSC program. On behalf of our federal, state, and local partners, we thank you for taking the initiative to participate in this program. If you apply for funding from other programs or other agencies, you will receive information from those program agencies separately."
So we did get this $32,000 grant to wet proof the low lift pump station, which pumps the wa, raw water out of the river into the water apartments, and that's great, and it's 50% match, and we have that in our capital fund.
Yep.
So thanks to Crawford Engineering for doing the, the grant expediting, and originally, this predated when I came back on board, but there was a, we did a vulnerability assessment.
This, the vulnerability assessment was actually started by Heinz Sauer when he was, when he was a trustee.
But we got a grant from someone just for that.
Just for that, and then...
Do you remember, recall who that was, or...
No, because I was a trustee, I was, I was the liaison to the water department then, and completed that study to do it, and then, you know, so, out of that study, there was several areas that were identified at high risk due to sea level rise, which is something that we've talked about a lot in terms of climate change, and sea level rise, whether you believe or not, is true, and if you look at all the records by the year 2021, our low lift pump stations, if we had another superstorm sandy event, would be underwater or pumps, and this is to bring all the electrical that controls those pumps from that underground level where the pumps are, which can run underwater, to a second story level, which is already existing, and help waterproof that, and that will protect our water intake supply if we were to have another event, because by 2021, which isn't that far away, that is possible to occur based on all the studies that we have right now.
And this is our most vulnerable thing, because if that influence is shut down, then we're shut down, we're not getting any raw water out of that, so we're taking care of it.
I'd just like to remind everybody that we have a three-day supply in our reservoir up on Haly, and that's in... and that's in worse conditions, a three-day supply, to get us through. But after that, if we don't, we're, our backup plan is pump, is trucks.
We don't have another source.
We do not have another source, is correct. So. But protecting this intake is critical, I think, and one of the major things that we can do to prevent us from the effects of climate change.
I think if you saw the film out of Boston over, over last week?
Yes.
With between a high tide, a full moon, and a big storm. There was water in places they hadn't seen it before and took a lot of people by surprise. And I, we've had another storm back in the 90s, I think. Also, we had a high tide, a full moon, and the water really came up the Hudson. And so, I'm looking to get work.
Yeah. Very good.
Excellent.
May I have a copy of that letter for the file, please?
Yeah.
So, the next step is to put this out for bid, right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I give Crawford can get one of them.
The grant that we had gotten for the vulnerability study was from DC, I believe, also.
Was this some estuary?
Yes.
Group though, that somehow got us the grant?
Because that's why I want to put this with that file.
I wanted to thank them, you know, and, and pay them too, but I don't, it predated what I...
We have it.
Yeah, I have, because I have it right on my desk, that file. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it. Thanks.
Waste water.
Okay, the wastewater treated was 2.8 million gallons. And gallons of sludge processed was 35,000 gallons. Pounds of sludge processed was 5,624 pounds. I don't know if you heard, Brian has reported that we need a, to get a new transducer. Now, you might ask me what a transducer is, so I...
Is a transducer?
I'm going to tell you right now.
Howie, what is a transducer?
It's a device which contains a sensor and converts its signal to, into an electrical signal for communication with other devices. And this is within the pump station.
What are we transducing from to, do we know?
This kind of, it kind of...
It's a signal.
Yeah, yeah, but it weighs the, the amount of matter in the, in the water.
Ah, okay.
So, I think this goes back to a event that we just recently had at the wastewater treatment.
Right, right.
Correct?
About two or three weeks ago, yes.
Two, three weeks ago, where we had an event where all of the affluent, basically there's five pumps. And as the affluent rises, another pump turns on to maintain that flow. And what happened was the, it, the affluent rose, which I believe is, as a result of the transducer not working properly.
Right.
All five pumps turned on, but the transducer then, when it started pumping out, the transducer did not send a signal back to shut the pumps off. And so, all five pumps kept running till the well with all the fluid in it went dry. And now the pumps are running without, as, were basically dry. And we were fortunate enough to have not have any damage to our pumps, but it's good to know now we know what the cause was.
Right, because the transu, yeah, it wasn't converting its signal.
Yes. Okay. Unfortunately, this transducer is going to cost us about $3,000.
Right.
Right.
And there's only one company that provides these. Emanz, E, E.
Emerson, Emerson, is it?
I think it's called Emanz. Yeah, anyway. John Fenton's been working on this, so I don't think I have to make a motion to purchase this.
I don't think so.
No.
And...
Just wanted to let you know that we're...
And just everybody knows that we do have, they, they've installed a workaround situation, I would say?
Yeah, yeah, they know, they know how to go around this transducer.
Until we can get the replacement parts.
Right.
So, we're not in jeopardy of having this happen again.
They're hitting over the rocks periodically.
And the other report is the security system's being worked on, but they, because of our quick turnaround, the company did not have all the parts that we need to get it done. So, it's been on hold. I think, I don't know when they're going to start up again, but...
I was under pressure, they're going to be done by Friday though.
Yeah, probably, but they, they had to stop for a while because they needed to get more equipment. Which is good news.
Yes.
Yeah.
Moving on. Nice, and next will be water and then highway.
Right. That's it for the wastewater.
Good. Okay, committee reports. Trees. Mr. Lewis, Jesse Lewis.
I got Howie working the pad here. We got to go up one.
Okay. Committee report.
Yeah, yeah.
Walters here from the Tree Committee.
Do you want, I can...
Okay, no, it's coming up. We're doing, okay. Oh, thank you. A hard copy. So, basically, a couple of things I'd like to discuss. The first thing, I'd just say the, the Tree Committee did review two applications. One from the Church of the Messiah, the removal of a large maple tree that was marked with orange tape. And the other one was from Pete Cipperly, Peter Cipperly at 38 South Street. And that's for the removal of a remaining dead trunk of a tree. And we'll have some discussion. We have a request from Mr. Cipperly about that, which we'll need to discuss. So, I'd like to move that we approve the, I guess the... Approve the approval? Of the, the Tree Committee's recommendations for the Church of the Messiah and for the dead trunk outside of Pete Cipperly's. Second. Okay.
All right, so we should have some discussion.
No, we should have discussion. So, as part of... Sure. As part of the, we have a letter from Peter Cipperly. And basically, the situation is that the tree trunk, which is currently outside of his house, was, the beginning of the removal of that took place, I believe you said, when Jim Reardon was mayor. And the village had undertaken that removal. However, there was a cable attached to the trunk that was a guy wire, basically. And so, the tree was being used as a support for a telephone pole. Over the years, that guy wire has now been removed. And now there's this stump of a tree, large stump of a tree, a totem pole. The issue is, is that when the project was begun, the village paid for and did all the work. The laws changed in the intervening years. And Mr. Cipperly is asking if we would pay for removal of the remaining section of the tree. So, the Tree Committee felt like that wasn't really their call to make. So, I said I'd bring it up here, talk about it here. And we got all the discussion.
I asked John Fenton to go take a look at it to see if it was something that could be done in-house. Did, did you, did I copy you guys?
Yeah, it cannot, cannot be done in-house because it's...
Has everybody seen a picture of the tree? It's really, it's really not a stump.
Right, it's 20 feet itself.
I'm sorry, I don't have a picture to show the audience on the, on the file, but it's a rather obvious. It's as large as a telephone pole and three times as wide. How's that?
So, the issue is that, yes, the, the Tree Committee agrees that it should be removed, but the question is, what does the board want to do about Mr. Cipperly's request?
Well, I was on the Tree Commission back then and there was a wire on it. And we had a few trees like this in the village where, and even Walter, since Walter works for Frontier, I would get him to go look at these wires and help us determine who's, what would happen if we took the wire down, right? There was another tree on, on the Beach Street, I, I think, that we had the problem with.
Was it on Beach Street?
Yeah. So, the whole tree could not be taken down at the time because there was a wire there that, that needed to be there, a guide wire. Was, was connected to the other telephone pole or something.
Right.
Yeah. Now that the wire's gone...
Has the wire been gone for a long time?
I don't know.
Yeah, well, probably years ago.
Only a year. That's not a long time. Because this tree was originally taken down when?
Oh, about five, six years ago.
I mean, the de-lived, you should say.
Yeah. And now it's clearly dying. You can see.
It is, it is dead.
It's dead. You can see from the picture.
Howie, the timeline that you were just discussing, when you were actually on the Tree Committee, that was about five, six years ago, is that...
Yeah, and about, and about, and that's when we used to take down the trees. For free.
Or they paid for them, really?
Yeah.
So, what I had asked was, was there any recommend, any decision made by the committee back then that is carried over to now? Because if we made a decision to say, yes, the tree will be down when the wire is removed, we should honor that, we should honor that commitment that was made.
Well, that's what we did tell people when, at the time, yeah. Between now and then, the law's changed, so...
Our village law's changed.
Right.
But we made a commitment as a...
Yeah, we made a commitment to take the rest of the tree down.
So, we did at the time?
Yeah.
Oh.
And Walter, I don't, you know, Walter was not on the board, but he was, he's involved.
It was left only because the cable.
Right, no, it's clear, it's clear, but I, so, but this is a new piece of information.
Yeah, the question's two pages from now.
You know, I understand.
The village said we will complete the job.
Yes. There wasn't too many of these situations.
Right, right.
The other ones have been taken down already.
Would it, would it be accurate to say, Howie, that if that cable wasn't there, that tree would have been completely taken down?
Oh, yeah, yeah, because...
And the village would have incurred the full cost.
Right, right.
Because that was the policy at the time.
Okay.
Not only that, but if it were healthy and we cropped it that way, we would have killed it.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, we, we weren't...
If it wasn't healthier, they would have never cropped it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So, then my only other question is, the other examples that were, this was the case, what did we as a village do?
We took the trees down.
We did.
After the cable was removed. I don't know why it took them so long to remove this cable. I don't know, was this a, this wasn't a, nothing to do with Frontier.
I think I, he said it was Frontier, but I believe it was actually Central Hudson.
Right.
Guy wire on the pole and, either way.
I mean, if that's the case, if we made, if we made the commitment and we, there's a precedence for already doing it.
Yes, we've done, but this is probably the third one. I think there was only three trees.
In my opinion, this is a no brainer.
Okay, good. Well, thank you, thank you. That's, that's an important piece of information.
Yeah, you won't, probably won't see this anymore. I don't think there's any other trees out there that had wires on it that we left.
Great.
It was Beach Street, and then there was another one, I think on Livingston.
Okay.
Long down by the hospital, two long, down Hudson Road.
That was gone too, though, right?
I don't, yeah.
Cable was gone, although the long there is a three...
Long as the village made, made regards where they are.
Yeah, so, the law was at the time that we, that's what we told them.
So, I will, I will communicate with John Fenton that he needs to arrange for a properly certified crew to come in and remove that tree at Village.
Given its size and stature, is it something we should get out to bid rather than just blowing up?
It would definitely trigger the procurement requirement.
So, however... I'll have them put it up for bid.
Is it an emergency? That, I mean...
I don't think it's an emergency.
I don't know.
It's been, it's been there for a while.
Right. I don't view it as an emergency.
Peter states it as a hazard.
So, we need to get three bids?
What?
In his letter, he stated it was a hazard.
I understand. I believe, that's true, but I don't believe it's in risk of falling tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean, is anybody, I've looked at it. I'm not a tree person.
Well, they agree that it needs to be removed. They did not give, give any timeline for... They haven't said it's imminent that... No, they did not, they did not. That was not one of their, that was not part of their...
So, let's make a motion that we put out a bid and go with the lowest bidder and so that we don't have to wait another 30 days to prove this and go on.
I'd like to make a motion that pending the selection of the lowest bidder, that the tree at 38 South Street be removed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? So carried.
Okay. And then one, this is just one piece of business, just for the board to know. Apparently, when the ordinance about tree removal was written, there was a second section, which the Tree Commission wanted to see, which was basically to attempt to regulate the trees in the village right-of-way that are replanted by homeowners. So, that there's a, their village has a right-of-way, they're below wires or not below wires. And there are basically trees that are better adapted and worse adapted for these situations. And the Tree Commission would like to see if we can amend the law such that the village has some sort of control over the trees that get planted in the right-of-way on Village Road. So, I'm going to develop that with them, but it's basically to prevent planting inappropriate trees. So, sometimes people might think, oh, well, this beautiful giant tree, but there's wires.
I thought we already had that law.
Right.
I thought we already had that.
According to Meg.
Okay.
And also, certain, certain trees that are sensitive to road salt or have limbs you can't have by a sidewalk. So, just, just to keep that, keep that clean. So, I'm going to work with that.
It's not going to be a law, right? It's going to be a suggestion.
Well, I think what we would do, what we were discussing was that the, there would be an application process just like the removal. And then there would be a list of recommended trees that would be acceptable in various circumstances. And then the board would go say, fine, this is...
I thought we kind of had something like that already too.
Well, it's never come past, so...
Well, I mean, no, Meg's the one who brought it.
Okay.
As a recommendation. She had a booklet at one time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She said it, it never, it never got rid of long. I don't see it, so... But I'll be working on it.
I think we've been following the practice, though.
Yes, yes.
I think we've been executing the practice, but not by...
I've never seen a planting permit come to, a planting application come to the vote.
We had requests, I know.
Okay, it's never come, it's never come to the Tree Commission.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
All right. Ethics Committee. I didn't see reported, good. Short-term vacation rental committee.
So, we're still, you know, finalizing a draft to show the public. I think what we need is to just set a deadline and have a workshop on the proposed revisions for short, affecting short-term rentals. So, I don't know if we would want to have it the same evening as a budget meeting. The gentleman representing the short-term rental people won't, is going to be out of country till about the 8th of February. The 13th is open, Tuesday, the 13th of February, if you want to have a workshop.
That's our village board meeting. I think, second Tuesday?
Oh, that's the second Tuesday.
Yes. You want to combine it with the board meeting on the 13th?
That's a lot.
As part of a discussion, or you think that it's going to drive more?
What about a Wednesday, like the 21st?
We got a budget meeting at 20.
Well, how about, how about on the 20th?
You want to have it the same as a budget meeting?
A budget meeting?
We can. Yeah.
Yeah, why not? So, the 20th?
Yeah, is that okay?
Is this a hearing or...
No, it's just a workshop.
Okay.
And this would be for public comment or for us or...
And us. Everyone.
That doesn't, is that tonight in the, is there any other use of this?
No, there's not a conflict there.
Not a conflict, the planning?
I'd have to look and see about court, because that's...
So, I, we'd have...
We already, yeah, did you guys already look at it for budget purposes?
No.
Because we felt there was an alternate for when we were doing the budgets.
Because budget, you can always use my office.
We, we could.
Yeah, and we could, this would be too, that would be too small of a venue for...
Yes, yes. So, we have to make sure. So, the 20th is good as long as there's no other, is, do you want to put an alternate date?
I can try to get... Yeah, I mean, it would be like the next night. We'd have consecutive meetings, but yeah. We'd have consecutive meetings, but, yeah.
Yeah, I don't care. Twenty-first?
Yeah, would be an alternate.
Yeah, alternate date, okay. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
It's good to finally get a date on the wall here.
We're just going to get something in front of everyone.
Thank you. Yeah.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
That's it.
The short, the environmental committee?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
The short term, will you have a draft that would, could be posted on the website?
However many days we normally get into?
Ten days.
Yeah, that's what I'm shooting for.
Any documentation that we have. I mean, for a hearing, it's ten days.
Yeah. So I'm going to try to...
Well, for a workshop, do you need to ten days?
No, that's what...
No, but I would go seven if, for a workshop. I don't, I don't want to make it four, or three, or anything like that.
Okay. All right. The, the environmental committee was supposed to meet last Thursday. Unfortunately, due to weather, it was canceled, so it has been rescheduled to the fifteenth, so no environmental meeting. Howie, Parks?
Parks, just want to report that we have the, the grant for the Legion Park, and there was some concern, we couldn't use, we have a hundred thousand dollar grant from the county, and eighteen thousand of that is for the engineering. We had to confirm with the county that, we still have to confirm, we, but we did find out, I gave Pat, I found a piece of paper over the weekend. I was cleaning out my village papers from years ago, and I found a piece of paper from when we, we interviewed our current engineer, and the county wants us to prove to them that we also interviewed a minority-owned engineer business or a woman-owned business. So one of the people that we did interview is a minority-owned business. That way, we can use the eighteen thousand dollars for the engineering for the park.
It's a submit for payment from the county as part of the grant.
Right, and that'll also hopefully apply for your crosswalk.
Right, we can use the same process.
So I've been talking to our engineer, Crawford, and he's going to talk with the county and show them what we have. So that's in the works.
Are we under a deadline?
I want to thank Pat, well...
For getting...
Next year. Has to be completed by next year, but we're going to...
By 2019?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought all expenses had to be incurred this year.
Well, we're going to, we're going to start working on it.
Okay.
We just wanted to confirm this engineering thing. I want to thank Pat for, for looking this up. I gave her a list of, I think it was seven engineering firms. She called them and confirmed that one of them is...
Yep.
Yes.
My job.
Yes, thank you. So that's it for the Parks.
Brands?
So Mr. Mayor, Board, on a meeting that we had December the twenty-first, we made a decision to move forward with a second grant application for electronic charging stations, because there's nothing that would preclude us from not doing that, and we were beginning to give consideration to locations other than the original site, that, that's still very much on our radar. But I can report tonight that that was completed. One of my committee members proofread it for me, and we met the deadline by a couple of days, which was December the thirty-first. Before coming to the meeting tonight, I logged in to the grants gateway, and I can see that, in fact, the one that we did in November and the one that we just did are both already in the eligibility review status. That happened just yesterday, as a matter of fact. So I think that's, it's a good sign in that our grant, both applications are being looked at and under review. Hard to say when we might have some sort of feedback on, on each of these. So pleased with that. And then also happy to report that, and there's a copy of it uploaded into the cloud, Pat and I finished with great assistance from our friend Linda, Linda Bull from the state. We have completed, and I'm ready to submit it, I'm sure the board doesn't have any reservations, we're seeking eighteen thousand dollars from the state for a digitizing project, and that includes minutes that are currently stored down in the security area in the basement. Some of those minutes go back to eighteen fifty, and we are obligated to maintain, I think Pat, payroll for fifty-five years?
As long as the last person is alive.
Payroll?
Yeah. And then so many years past that, so your guess is...
So we, we have, between those two initiatives, we have about forty-six thousand pieces of paper that will, if this grant is approved, will be moved to a digitized format and forever secure. And, by the way, more importantly, much more accessible. So that grant of eighteen thousand, fourteen thousand is to cover the vendor. Pat and I, we put this out through NISID for bids. In fact, the gentleman came over, met with Pat, and we have a bid for fourteen thousand dollars. That's the digitizing of it. We will send them the paper. They'll bring the paper back to us. They'll hand us a thumb drive. Everything will be on that. And then I've also allocated about four thousand dollars so that we could bring in, hopefully, some resources to assist with the verification of, of this, as well as the prep work. So if all is approved, you know, we will be looking at eighteen thousand, and hopefully, as I said, a portion of that, we've got, we've, we're, didn't pull the number out of anywhere, that Linda gave us guidelines on how you would calculate the cost, justify the cost to bring in a couple of people that would assist us, you know, in, in this project. Pat would be, of course, as the village clerk, have oversight of, of the project. Her time would be in kind, but the rest of the funds, you know, we hopefully will get from the state. So that has to be filed by next Monday, by next Tuesday, the sixteenth. Unless the board has some reservations, we'll have that out this week, and, you know, we should hear something in, in the June timeframe, June, July. So that's it.
I think that grant's fantastic. I mean...
Yeah.
We have the process in place with Laserfish.
Oh, yes.
And all of the support mechanisms ready to use it, so...
Mr. Mayor, I'm glad you mentioned that, because part of what, this is a competitive grant, and the fact that we have made the investment, thanks to Pat, in the Laserfish technology, that will certainly accelerate our chances beyond some of the, we think, some of the people that we're competing with, which is basically every municipality, school district, library that, that files for this. By the way, this is annual, so if we're successful this year, we'll do it again next year.
Right.
And we'll, and we'll just keep going, so...
Very good.
It also shows the board's dedication to the records management by putting money in the budget last year to redo the one portion of the, of the, of our walk downstairs where our records are maintained. So it's, the board has been equally as dedicated.
Those specifics are actually woven into the, the narrative of the grant. Here's why we feel that the village is justified because of those investments, so...
Very good.
Fingers crossed.
Good job. All right, so now we're going into special requests. Fall foliage marathon. The Fall Foliage Marathon, this was submitted December eighteenth, Fall Foliage Half Marathon and Five K. That's an annual event. This is year number eight for this Fall Foliage event. So it's, it starts and ends at the fairgrounds, running, you know, consecutively now for eight years. I believe that all of these have been reviewed, correct, Pat?
I've sent them all to, to Pete, yes.
To Pete, and either...
He has questions on one of the next. He didn't have any problem with the marathon.
So we're going through this in detail. Do I have a motion to accept the Fall Foliage?
Second. No, I'd like to make, did you make the motion?
I'm, I'm making the motion on the Fall Foliage.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Thank you. Next would be the Farmer's Market. And this is a request to, by Georgia, right? You're here. Would you like to come up and to address it or not? Since you're here.
Okay. We just have an annual...
You're sorry, you have to go to the mic.
Go to the mic.
The mic, over here.
There you go.
We have an annual vendor meeting every year, and we're just requesting the usage of this hall. It's on January twenty-fifth, and it'll be about two hours, starting at six, and there'll probably be about thirty people.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Farmer's Market request to use the village hall.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Been closed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And Porch Fest twenty eighteen. Name of napkin is Liz Matarara. The Porch Fest is scheduled for Rhinebeck Porch Fest twenty eighteen. The dates are Saturday, are Saturday, September twenty-ninth, from ten a.m. to eleven a.m., and event time, you know, seven p.m., and teardown at seven p.m. And the location is to be determined, so there's actually more information to come about, but obviously, it's going to be in the same area as last year, and it's considered between two and three thousand people coming to this event, right? There is one additional thing that they're adding this year, and that is a use of the municipal parking lot at the end for, like a grandstand, at which they would organize and use, a lot similar to what Cinderclaws does at the end of the parade. They would set up a stage, have performers on the stage, and everybody could then go into the municipal parking lot and continue, rather than continuing on the streets where it is now at Holmes, it would then now move back into the, into the municipal parking lot. I do believe there was some questions before when bands kept playing after the end time on people's residences. Some people did object to that. I think this answers that question and allows it, brings it back into the municipal parking lot.
So Pete seemed to indicate that he had some more questions about this.
Right.
Do you want to...
Let me just read one more statement. Their, their amendment is, they would like to propose an event with a free one-hour-long performance in the municipal parking lot. I wanted to make sure you're aware of the time. And they would recruit a professional band that would draw people back into the village center, and we feel that, they feel that that would be beneficial to local businesses, restaurants, and encourage shops to stay open later for this event. So I'd like to make, we can have a discussion, but I'd like to make a motion that we accept Porch Fest twenty eighteen.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Pat, you said there were some questions?
From Brent, Matt, just to communicate that Pete wanted to have some discussion with the event, promoter before the board approved.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I...
So, all right, so before we approve, then, we should adjourn, we will have a secondary meeting to discuss this, what you're saying?
Or it can be discussed, you can table it until, until you get the recommendation from Pete, until the next...
Yeah, I'd like to table it till then.
I think that's fair. So I'd like to make a motion, we table this then. I'd like to amend the motion, say we table this event until after further discussion and approval by our police department.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carried. Other business. Pat, would you like to read this, in terms of, since you're in charge of election, a resolution for village election?
Or do you want me to?
Can you?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
All right, so something we're required to do. The next village election for the officers of the village of Rhinebeck will be held on Tuesday, March twentieth, twenty eighteen. That no person, this is a resolution, sorry, that no person shall be entitled to vote in this election unless they are registered with the County Board of Elections and on the county voter registration list. Residents of the village of Rhinebeck must register with the County Board of Elections by March ninth, twenty eighteen, to be included on the county list for the March twenty eighteen village election. If you're already registered with the county at your current address, you do not have to register and, with the county to vote, to vote. And second, that the village of Rhinebeck no longer holds a village registration day, that the village board of trustees must designate by resolution and publish the offices which are to be filled in each election district in terms thereof, now therefore be resolved. Section one, that the board of trustees designates the following offices as vacant at the end of the current official year to be filled at the village election to be held Tuesday, March twentieth, twenty eighteen, for the following terms. Trustee, two-year term, first Monday in April twenty eighteen through noon of the first Monday in April twenty twenty. Trustee, two-year term, first Monday in April twenty eighteen through noon from the first Monday of twenty twenty. Section two, that the village clerk is hereby directed to publish his resolution in full in the Poughkeepsie Journal. Voting for the forthcoming election should be conducted Tuesday, March twentieth, twenty eighteen, from noon to nine p.m. at the Rhinebeck Town Hall, Eight East Market Street, Rhinebeck, New York. The town hall is handicapped accessible. I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution for the election in March twentieth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
May I just mention that at your next special meeting, I'm going to have a list of the election inspectors that I'm going to ask you to approve, so that that can be done before the end of the month.
Pat, question, if somebody wants to register to vote, they can drop by your office and pick up the form?
There's voter registration forms usually in the lobby. I have some in my office. The town hall has them, I think the post office has them. They can be obtained online from Dutchess County Board of Elections, and they get mailed to the Dutchess County Board of Elections.
Great.
While registrations done through them.
Okay, next event is, we have some surplus vehicles that are available. How's that? But I think it's time that we try to cash in on them before they become really surplus. The first is a two thousand and two Ford Ranger, which we did acquire from the town as part of the trade with the, for the use of the skid steer, along with the Dodge, which has now been put in service, by the way, and is used by our Z E O and building administrator to replace one of the other vehicles. So the two thousand and two Ford Ranger is vehicle number one. We also have the two thousand and five Dodge Durango, which was our zoning enforcement officer vehicle that is no longer being used, it's been replaced with the two thousand and eight Dodge that we, that we received from the town. And we have a police car, if anybody would like a police car. We have a two thousand and seven Dodge Charger. So I would like to make a motion that we put these three vehicles out for bid.
Second.
And any discussion?
Just, this must probably be a typo, the Durango and the Charger have the same I D number?
Oh, that's going to be a typo. That's my bad.
That's a typo.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my bad, sorry.
Good observance there.
Very good. That's what copying and pasting will do.
Which one's right? Which one's right?
Offhand? Beanie, beanie, miney, I don't know, I don't...
All right. So, all right, so having said that, we're going to go out for bid, we need to set a date for the docket, for it to go out, so we could put it out now, right?
Yeah, I'll put it up now, and then it's when the bid should be received and when you want to open the bids and award the bid. Do you want to do it at a board meeting? You're having a bunch of special meetings, I mean, it has to have time to be published.
The next, do we have enough time if we want to do it at the twenty-third, at the public meeting?
This is the ninth.
Day's the ninth?
Ten days, yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Then we'll open the bids on the twenty-third for these three vehicles. Very good.
Are the bids for all three or per vehicle?
Per vehicle.
Per vehicle.
Okay.
Per vehicle, and they are currently located at the highway garage, behind, behind the, behind the highway garage, is where all three of them are currently located.
So the bids are to be received in my office by four o'clock on the twenty-second? Is that when that board meeting is?
The twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
And then they'll be open at seven o'clock at the board meeting.
At the board meeting. Very good. Good. Thank you. And minutes approval, I'd like to make a motion to approve the December twelfth, twenty-seventeen minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to, I'm trying to find it here. As far as the, given the right-of-way to dandelion, I think, I'd like to have a change to not just specifically dandelion, because that, we discussed that anybody can come in and...
It's not exclusive.
Right, it's not exclusive to dandelion.
But we are, we are looking at giving them a right-of-way.
Right, but...
But it's not exclusive.
Right, but the, when you read it, that's what it kind of says. I can't find it here, but... Can we say, any qualified vendor, or however we want to word it?
I'd have to listen to them, because I write the minutes. The minutes are from what was taken at the meeting, so if, if it was said that it was given to dandelion, then that's...
Yeah, but Brent and I questioned it. I think that, you know, it's not specifically for dandelion.
Which it's not. Well, no, this, yeah...
It would be a non-exclusive easement, but...
It's not exclusive. It is specific for dandelion to give them the right-of-way, but we're not making an exclusive agreement.
Right, we're not making an exclusive use of the right-of-way.
So somebody else would have to come and ask.
Yes.
So if someone else came along, we'd have to get an agreement with them.
No, but, well, maybe you should look at, pan to them, because I, I said, this is not just for dandelion, and anybody can do this, and everybody goes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which is true, if they came forward.
Right, but...
They needed to come forward and ask.
We're not creating an agreement. My understanding is, we're not going to create an easement agreement that will allow uses. We're, it's actually like an agreement with that each group that comes along and needs it.
It's not a blanket...
It's not a blanket.
On a non-exclusive basis. You see?
Yeah. But can we put something in there also saying, well, you have to read, you have to.
Yeah, 'cause I can't go saying something that wasn't said.
Well, then.
It's at the, it's at the top of page thirteen, to go forth for the purpose of developing an agreement and easement for geothermal heating and cooling with Dandelion.
It's still an agreement.
Yeah, it's an agreement with them, but not exclusive.
Can we say, developing a non-exclusive agreement?
Well, I think the wording is okay, personally.
Depends on what was said, you can't.
Right, we haven't restricted the, the agreement is with them.
I understand it, but it doesn't say that there, when somebody reads that, if, if, if another company reads that, they're gonna think that's only Dandelion has this agreement and nobody else can approach the village. But, like you said, if you want to, can we table this until Pat reads the, or hears, how are you gonna do this?
I'd have to listen to the, go through the.
If you can put non-exclusive in there comfortably, then.
I have no problem with putting non-exclusive easement, but I'd have to listen to.
But it's not a blanket agreement.
I'd have to, I don't want to change something that, that's not.
Right.
I mean. I, I have no problem with non-exclusive easement, if that's how.
Non-exclusive agreement.
An agreement, yeah, I have no problem with that.
I'm okay with that. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, it's gonna say, non-exclusive agreement with Dandelion?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Alright. All in favor with the amended changes?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Minutes for December twenty-first, twenty seventeen, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for twelve, twenty-one, seventeen.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Correspondence? No correspondence, Pat?
Yes, I had, sorry, I had two.
Okay.
We had two thank you notes.
No, you're, you.
Thank you, dear Mayor Basset, this is a belated note to thank you and the members of the town, town board for your invaluable support and assistance in the connection with our event with Hillary Clinton, we couldn't have done it. Oh, we couldn't have done it without you, thanks Suzanne and Dick. And then this one is, dear Pat, this is a belated thank you for both, thank you for your help and connection with our recent event with Hillary Clinton, we greatly appreciated, best wishes, Helen, Suzanne, and Dick. That's all, our correspondence.
From Oblong Books.
From Oblong Books.
Very good.
Aye. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Is there anything on four C, one, the emergency coordinator?
The applicant, the request for applicants has been posted with a due date of the end of the month for emergency, yeah. Oh, we, we. Somebody else have a question?
No, it's on.
It's just on there.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, it is on the agenda? I didn't, I'm sorry, I'm not looking. We're, I don't see it on the agenda.
Four C.
Four C.
Four.
For the fire department to, yeah.
Alright, so, yeah, so, well, that's fine, we missed it, so the point, yes, we have gone out for requests for the emergency response coordinator which, um, was reviewed and accepted at a previous meeting and it has been posted, has it been posted in the paper as well?
They called me today, so it should be in probably tomorrow.
Very good, um, because I had to have requests, that was, was in there. And with, uh, people to respond with their resumes to the village clerk by close of business day on the thirtieth.
And there's a hyperlink and everything connected to it, because that was his, his question to me.
Well, any, any, good, you're welcome, thank you for reminding me, appreciate it. Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters in, in relation to the recent resignation of our village and zoning clerk.
Second.
Right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to close our initial executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. So, I'd like to make, now, do we have to make a motion to go back into regular meeting? I, I'd like to make a motion to go back into our regular board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so in the executive session, we did discuss the recent resignation of Karen McFarland, who was our building and zoning, uh, clerk, uh, worked for us for almost sixteen years. And Karen resigned effective December twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen, and as part of her resignation, we are, um, going to pay out her vacation time and her, uh, comp time, right? As, as part of the payout, as part of her exit of business. All in favor of paying out vacation time and comp time, which amounted to?
Seventy-one hours, seventy-one point oh-three hours.
Seventy-one point oh-three hours. I'd like to make a motion that we pay out.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So carried. Okay, and now I'd like to make a motion to go back into an executive session for discussing, uh, some interim personnel issues that don't require a vote and to deal with anything.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close the regular meeting?
Yes. Alright, so now what, so we're going back into executive session? Alright, now I'd like to make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right. I'd like to make a motion to close the regular January ninth, uh, twenty eighteen village board of trustees meeting at nine forty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.